Good morning, everyone. To this morning's session. My name is Tewa. I work with the Medicines Patent Pool. I'll be your moderator for this, for this special session. We are really privileged to have a distinguished lineup of individuals this morning to take us through a diverse set of topics. And we'll be starting, we'll be kicking off with the keynote address by Precious. Precious Masoso is not a stranger to many of us. She chairs the International Negotiating Body for Pandemic Preparedness and Response at WHO, the agreement that is commonly referred to as the Pandemic Agreement. So she is the co-chair, so there are two chairs. We're privileged to have her to take the keynote address. But before she takes the floor, that's not the only position that, you know, that's not the only responsibility that she has had. In South Africa here, she led various departments, various leadership roles. And then at WHO, she was also the head of various departments. So she's contributed a lot to global health and will be learning a lot from her experience and expertise this morning. Without further ado, I want to hand over to Precious. Thank you.
Well, good morning. I was asked to give a keynote address and I, I thought perhaps it would, it would be more appropriate to, to make a presentation so that I can, I take time to give you the insights processes. That is not public of the, of the negotiation process for the pandemic accord. Some call it a pandemic treaty or pandemic agreement. I thought I would take this opportunity also to just share with you what, what is it that's holding us back. In fact, we should be celebrating and toasting and, you know, celebrating that, that deal is done. But of course you'll understand what the barriers are, what the shortcomings are and why is it difficult, particularly in this geopolitical environment. And as I speak, I wanted to just say that just a day after the Ukraine war started, that's when we started negotiations. So it's exactly 1,000 days that the negotiations have been taking place. So 1,000, I'm sharing with you 1,000 days of work that we've been involved in. So I will not repeat because most of you know about the devastations of COVID. But we've, we've asked, why, why now? Why do we need a pandemic agreement now? Because of, we've seen the economic, social impact. But, but we also understand the, the interlinkages between human, animal and environmental health and why it's so necessary to link all of these in the manner in which, in the manner in which we designed this pandemic agreement. But in the manner in which we bring these, we, we have to recognize the interconnectedness of the world and that whatever happens, if they are geopolitical issues, they affect all of us. They are not confined to one particular region or one particular country. But again, we also understand the enormous impact economically, why goods can move across countries when you have pandemics. But we also know when there are conflicts. It is for that reason that in the manner in which we respond, we address all these complex geopolitical issues. Next, please. So the World Health Assembly took a decision, as you all remember, in 2021. I always start by saying, you know, the manner in which treaties are written and, and for the lawyers in the room, you'll know that you start with a text that is negotiated. But with us, we started with a clean page and were instructed to first identify elements that should be incorporated in the treaty. And in doing so, we had to follow a scientific approach. We looked at all the reviews, all the assessments as to what is it that we find from different experts across the world and created a digital platform, collected all of those. And it's a basis on which we compiled what we described as a draft document. We started with a draft document, not a treaty, not a legal instrument. But the draft document was intended to at least collect all the views. Some said a problem was with equity. Others said prevention, lack of preparedness, a lack of manufacturing capacity, constraints in raw material. I mean, a whole host of issues. And in our response, we tried to collect all of that and compile them into a single document. And, but the, the, the brief was that we needed to come up with a legally binding instrument. Meaning from that compilation, we had to produce a draft legal instrument. And that legal instrument had to be legally binding. And why do you need a legally binding instrument? Because we need a political commitment. But we also need to ensure that we have globally agreed principles. If we say equity is a problem, we must come up with measures that will prevent inequitable distribution of products, whether they be therapeutics, vaccines or diagnostics. If prevention is a problem, we need to ensure that we have measures that can address prevention. If health workforce say that they did not have PPEs, we have to ensure that the measures that we put in place can protect them. So all the measures that we come up with should help us prevent this disaster from ever happening again. But also, these measures should also ensure that we are better prepared in future and then we can respond much more appropriately and effectively. So it is for that reason that we have to commit and come up with a future-proof legal system that ensure that whatever we come up with today, it can be applicable 20, 30, 50 years to come. We mustn't write an instrument that is only suitable for today, but 50 years from now, it must still be relevant and it must still be useful. Next, please. So these are the mandates that were given. We were supposed to have finished May 2024, but of course we couldn't and I'll explain as we go along why we couldn't. So it is for that reason that we granted an extension to finish in December, meaning next month, or May next year. So our preference was December this year. And I'm still hopeful that you will finish. Next, please. So this is the timeline that we've been involved in. We've had a couple of meetings. If you see just between February and July, one would say it's INB 1 and INB 2. But we had what we called resume sessions. Meaning we, we work, if we don't finish, we resume. We, we keep on meeting. I mean, I was saying earlier that I spent almost a month in Geneva because we had to meet almost every month or every second month. So this is how frequent we've been meeting to come up with various iterations of drafts that, that are basis of negotiations.
Sorry, for the person. Apologies for, yeah. The person moving the slide, she, she please move to the next slide. I think you are one slide behind. The next one, please. Sorry for the disruption.
Yes. Next, so this is the timeline until May. Next slide. So this is where we are, that red, the first red octagon, eh? Am I right? Hexa, 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 yeah. So, so we, we are hoping that we can still finish in December. But, you know, to be honest, we don't have six months left. We have a couple of days left. And I say a couple of days precisely because, like I said, the geopolitical environment is changing and there are a lot of pressures that are coming with that and we don't know what the outcome of, of the negotiations will be. But these are imposing huge, huge pressure on the type of decisions that need to be taken. Next, please. So the areas we have, I think for those who don't know, we, we have key thematic areas which I'd like to refer to. The first area is about prevention and one health. And there is a very strong belief that we need to put prevention measures in place. We need to address one health because of zoonotic bill overs. And if we don't address those and because of possible spread of disease that come as a result of, like for instance, we've seen with Ebola from bats, from animal to humans. We've seen more lately with the H5N1, the risks if this spread widely from bats to human. So for that reason, we have to put those preventative measures in place. We need to have surveillance systems, not just for the human area, but also for the broader sector. We know when we have floods, there are normally risks associated with that. For instance, cholera is always a concern and there are a whole lot of other waterborne diseases that we are faced with. It is a whole host of disasters bring with them, various diseases and outbreaks. And it is for that reason that we really need to look at a much more comprehensive approach in a multi-sexual way. So the second area is what they describe as equity-related issues. And these have to do with production, technology transfer, research and development, local production and diversified production in particular of medical products or pandemic health-related products. It's also about research and development as well as supply chain and logistics. So there's a second group of equity-related areas. But there's yet another area which is about pathogen access and benefit sharing. The argument has been that when pathogens are shared, there are normally no sufficient benefits. And it's an area that is of concern, particularly for developing countries. And this is a group of issues that are referred to as equity-related issues. But we also have health systems related issues. Like for instance, the strengthening of the health system, having laboratories that work, but also the health workforce. Like I said earlier, the health workers had to be protected. In fact, not only health workers, but as well as other frontline workers have to be protected during outbreaks and also during pandemics. Two other areas relate to financing and governance. So if you look, this is how the whole pandemic agreement has been put together to deal with equity, also with finance, governance, health systems and tools, but also prevention measures to help us to be better prepared. So of all these issues, these are the most crucial but remaining issues and I will deal with them later. Again, there are three other issues. Tech transfer, supply chain, procurement and distribution. These are also issues, like I've said, but not as deeply where you get major, major diversions. But these are of interest to all of you and I'd like to talk to these later. So articles that have been agreed upon and I'm pleased to say that at least it gives me hope is with regard to the health workforce, at least if this agreement was to be adopted tomorrow, at least will ensure that the health workers are protected. The health systems resilience, at least the health system which did not, which did not, could not be sustained and which caved under COVID. The provisions that we have, at least you can ensure that you have resilient health systems. Research and development, I wrote it under, almost agreed because you are left with three words, three words before an agreement can be reached and I'll talk to that. Geographically diversified, local production. I think it's a matter that is of interest to all of you and I'm glad to say it's a matter that is agreed. If we're to sign tomorrow, at least we'll be able to implement the provisions of this treaty. Regulatory system strengthening, it will not happen without that. It's an area where an agreement has been reached. So I'm raising this because if you look at these provisions alone, they are not sufficient without the others where agreement has not been reached. But for your work, you not only need research and development provisions, geographically diversified production as well as regulatory system strengthening. You also need goods that you produce to move across borders. You have to ensure that they are bought. You have to ensure that there's a global system, a mechanism that can buy these products and ensure that they are moved to different countries when they are needed. You have to ensure that there are proper procurement processes. So those provisions, I think we are left with one or two issues and I'll refer to them. But before you can even produce, there must be technology transfer. But there are debates about whether technology transfer should be mandatory, whether it should be compulsory, whether it should be enforced or whether it should be voluntary and whether technology transfer should be on mutually agreed terms. And this is what is holding back the finalization of these agreements. So these are the issues that I think are worth noting. Firstly, Article 11, as I said, deals with technology transfer. So the first issue and it is probably a matter of interest to the Medicines Patent Pool. The issue here is whether the licenses of government-owned pandemic-related health technologies must be on non-exclusive basis and whether information regarding these licenses should be published and whether the terms of the licenses should be made public by the manufacturers. You'll recall that there were debate about the time-bound waivers with regard to the TRIPS agreement. So there is a much more simple, agreeable language that has been formulated which refers to time-bound measures. But there's also a provision for a peace loss. A peace loss deals with the fact that when countries use TRIPS provisions, they should not be prevented from doing so. So, but it's written in such an acceptable and agreeable manner that is not actually adversarial, that will not cause conflict between different countries. Article 13 and 13Bs deals with supply chain, like I said, and logistics, procurement and so on. Now, because, and I refer to the geopolitical environment and some of the conflicts, what has happened in this period because of the emerging problems across the world? We've seen an emergence of a group of countries, a group of 10 countries that have pushed for particular language in the pandemic agreement. They have asked for inclusion of the words of unhindered access and that unilateral cohesive measures must not be imposed. And in simple English, universal cohesive measures means sanctions. These are countries that say sanctions must not be imposed on them during pandemics. So what happens is we have 10 countries that where sanctions are imposed for whatever reasons. But now they see this as an opportunity to include provisions. But the question is, should these provisions be limited only to pandemics? Or do they see this as an opening to open the door even for other things? And I think these are the kind of difficult issues that we have to deal with. And, and our, our view as the, the bureau during these negotiations is that we need to deal with pandemics. We need to address pandemics and not use the pandemic treaty to, to be a platform to deal with all other issues that can be dealt with elsewhere. So that when pandemics happen in future, we can then resolve them. The other issues on liability risk management, as you know, that for companies to invest, for instance, in research and development for vaccines, there must be a scheme, a compensation scheme in liability risk management. So there are some countries that would not want this to happen. And this is just linked to their historical issues and their country-related issues, national problems which we think should not affect that global intentions of coming up with a pandemic treaty. So we also have the financial coordinating mechanism. At the moment, there is an agreed language as the international health regulations are adopted. And for now, we have a provision here. So we need to establish a governance between the two instruments as to how they'll work. But of course, the most difficult, I think these Article 11, 13, 13 bis 20 and Chapter 3, there can be a solution. We will find a resolution. The most difficult are Article 4 and 5, which deals with one health and prevention together with Article 12, which deals with pathogen access and benefit sharing. These are the two that are most difficult that can make or break the pandemic treaty negotiations. So if there's agreement in this, I think we'll be able to make a deal. And finally, on Article 9, this one is about research and development. We are left with three words. The first one is whether the sharing of comparator, because there was an argument that there must be access to a comparator. So the argument here is that having access to a comparator must be voluntary. It can't be imposed on industry. It must be, industry must be willing to make it available. The second is about post-trial access. As you know, it's an ethical consideration that post-trial, the participants of, who, the participants of clinical trials must have access when the trials have been completed. However, the provision here is that it must be expanded beyond just those who are participating in the trials. So the question is, if you include communities, what should it, you know, what should be the appropriate language? It can't be enforced, perhaps it can be promoted or, you know, it's just finding the appropriate language. So there are few things, like I said, that all these things that I referred to can be resolved easily if member states can agree on the use of terms. If they can agree about whether they use the word persons or people. You know what debating, whether we can include person or people and it takes us the whole day to agree. Relevant health products, this is already defined in the international health regulations. Our viewers that just copy and paste, they're saying no. Let's look at whether it's appropriate to include or not. Stakeholders, I think you are all stakeholders. But we are sitting defining what a stakeholder is and it's taking us forever. But if we can define a stakeholder, I think it can help us resolve most of the provisions. Let me just share with you on how we can look at this. To define know-how, we'll resolve eight paragraphs. Just agreeing on the word voluntary will deal with six paragraphs. They'll be agreed. If we agree on the word mutually agreed, five paragraphs will be resolved. If we deal with persons or people or both, 12 paragraphs will be resolved. For relevant stakeholders, if you say define and you all agree, 18 paragraphs. We don't have to sit all the time. And of course, unimpeded, unhindered. It's a difficult one, but we think we can find a resolution. So on that note, in conclusion, I think we can finish this. It's possible, it's doable. And like I said, let's do this for future generations. I thank you.
Thank you very much, Precious. I think that was really great. Asking someone to summarize the work of 1,000 days in 20 minutes. It's not, it's not easy, so we appreciate that. We are a bit behind, just a few minutes behind the schedule. So we'll move straight to the next presenter and that's going to be Dr. Alban Pille. Dr. Alban has been with us since yesterday, so many of us know him. But for colleagues that are online that may not be here yesterday, he is the deputy director at the Department of Health of South Africa. Dr. Pille.
Morning, everyone. Thank you for, for putting this item on the agenda. I think it's an important issue for you to have a sense of where South Africa is in terms of our G20 presidency. So just to give you a sense of the history relating to, to our G20, we, we will assume presidency in December, so in the next couple of days. During the State of the Nation address, the president articulated our position on, on the G20, our posture, which, as he said, is we will place Africa's development at the top of the agenda when we host the G20 in 2025. So I think all of the tracks that the G20 will discuss will attempt to make sure that it reflects Africa's development and I think that's probably going to be key. It's also important to ensure that the G20 remains sensitive to the needs of developing economies of Africa as well as the global South as we, we debate and discuss many of the issues. So South Africa's presidency in 2025 will include building on the achievements that have been made in India as well as in Brazil and see how we bring some continuity to it given what's already been initiated through those processes. We will be presented with the opportunity to champion some of these health challenges facing the global South within the framework of the G20. And we're hoping that we can deal with some of them, accepting that clearly we cannot deal with all the issues through the G20 process. So we'll have to identify the key ones. So we'll have to identify the key ones that that we think are offer an opportunity. So over the past several years, when the G twenty was hosted by different countries, issues that affected Africa did did have resonance in in the G twenty. In twenty sixteen, Germany looked at supporting industrialization of the Africa Initiative. In twenty seventeen, China supported the Industrialization in Africa Initiative, support for Focac and the Belt and Road Initiative. Italy in twenty twenty one, at the time of the pandemic, supported the mRNA hub as well as the COVID nineteen pandemic initiatives. Indonesia in twenty twenty two looked at support for industrialization in Africa. And then in twenty twenty three, the EU got a seat in the G twenty. That was in the in the presidency of India. So what are some of the considerations? I think important for us to try and strike a balance on strategic agenda items. The G, the G twenty is a broad church and we need to somehow be able to balance the interests of different countries. South Africa has a number of health priorities, so does the the African continent. And we'd like to somehow see that expression within the G twenty, particularly on health issues. We'd like to articulate the global south health priorities and see how those can be reflected in the agenda and the discussion points. We also want to broadly embrace global health challenges and and provide some some direction during our presidency. So the element of continuity from Brazil is important as well, and particularly the selected priorities that we have have pursued. So the the cabinet has approved the the theme being solidarity, equality and sustainable development. So I think as we as we select the topics and and structure the discussion points, important that we that we reflect on these. So solidarity to signify the unified effort and mutual support among our member states. On equality to to deal with fair treatment, opportunities and advancement for all individuals and nations, irrespective of their economic status, gender, geographic location, et cetera. And then on sustainable development to integrate the economic growth, social inclusion, environmental protection, ensuring long-term health and stability of all people on our planet. So going now to the key areas that we as health will be putting up for for discussion. This still needs to be finalized by by the Sherpa group. So there may be changes following those meetings, which are happening in December. The first priority is to look at strengthening primary care as a pathway towards universal health coverage and how how could countries pursue this. This has resonance as well, I think, to to many developed nations or the global north as such, simply because if you look at the at the health systems in developed countries, they're facing huge budget challenges, largely because they're structured on a hospice-centric curative model with a minimum primary care model. And many developing countries have actually started with a primary care model, which is a great, great place to start. And so I think it's important that we we share experiences and reflect on 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 how countries could could progress the U H C depending where they are currently. The second, which I think is probably most relevant for for this meeting, is pandemic preparedness, prevention and response. And here, the the focus is on some of the key areas relating to pandemic preparedness. Many countries are in the phases of planning for 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 a pandemic and there's been progress in various streams, the five Cs as they call it. And so our intention is to take stock about where we all are, what are what are the challenges that countries are experiencing and how could we deal with those challenges? That would be issues of surveillance, issues of access to countermeasures and how they're dealing with that, clinical care, community engagement, and then having emergency operating centers in place to respond both to pandemics as well as climate change, et cetera. What we also want to focus on under pandemic preparedness is local production. This has been a key theme for for the African continent. How can we promote local production, particularly of vaccines? And I think there's a number of of ideas of how that could be structured. And 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 I think over time, we will probably sharpen that that topic. And then finally, around pandemic preparedness and response, we're looking also at antimicrobial resistance. We just had the UN high-level meeting. There is a strong interest both in the global north as well as developing countries around how we deal with this issue. And so we would want to include antimicrobial resistance as part of that. The 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 third area is around human resources for health. As you know, there are huge challenges on human resources for health, particularly in developing countries. There is the migration of health workers, how how can those issues be dealt with? Given the migration is usually from the global south to the global north, issues of mid-level workers and the like. So I think there's a lot to discuss as well around human resources for health. The third area is stemming the tide on non-communicable diseases. Typically, the discussion of NCDs was a was a topic that was exclusively a problem of the global north, but I think it's it's becoming a huge problem even in developing countries. The 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 related challenge is that very often donor funding is linked to to financing of communicable diseases in developing countries. And so very little is allocated towards non-communicable diseases. But this this is going to change. And so countries need to to reflect on how do they finance this tide of NCDs that are coming? Your diabetes, hypertension, cardiovascular diseases, cancers, et cetera, and and what approach can be taken? And finally, looking at science-based innovation and what are the interventions that health systems can put in place that can leapfrog health systems from where they are now to to deliver a more efficient service rather than going through the usual transformation that older health systems have gone through, but rather using science and innovation to do that? And and the overall theme, as I mentioned earlier, is to accelerate universal health coverage through equity, solidarity and and innovation. So we've also discussed some some detail around logistics such as venues and cities where we would be having these meetings. At this stage, we're proposing that the meetings take place in in Dublin, Johannesburg and Cape Town. In March, we were looking at having the P H C meeting towards U H C and the non-communicable diseases meeting. And Johannesburg, the pandemic preparedness as well as a science-based innovation meeting. We still need to finalize a venue and date for the human resources meeting and proposing then that the ministers meet in October. So these would obviously be subject to change depending on how countries, Sherpas respond to these on their availability, their own plans, whether these clash with other meetings such as the G seven and others that 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 may be planned. So please note that these these dates would may change. As a calendar of events, well, Brazil will hand over its presidency to us in December. And then in December, we would then issue out the Health Working Group priority documents. And there will be a Health Working Group established, which would basically have a representative from each country participating. We will then host the first virtual consultation meeting in January to just discuss the items and and finalize the agenda points, et cetera. And the first Health Working Group in-person meeting will be in March. We anticipate we'd have to have some virtual meetings because it's difficult to get all of the G twenty members to come come to South Africa regularly. There are many other other items on their agendas as well. So I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pille. That was a comprehensive overview of the G twenty presidency for South Africa for twenty twenty five. We we know how powerful the G twenty is and we we're looking forward to the opportunity that that can be harnessed for the objectives of this program. And then in particular, local production and technology transfer. The G twenty account for, I I think, over ninety percent by some account, over ninety percent of R and D expenditure. And then we we believe that there's an opportunity there in terms of how how the G twenty can really influence the elements of R and D as a as a way, in terms of putting condition for R and D as a way for advancing equity. In Precious' earlier presentation, she spoke about a provision in in the I N B about putting conditions for access in R and D. And we're looking forward to the possibility that G twenty will help to advance advance such kinds of initiatives if eventually agreed at the I N B. So once again, thank you so much, Dr. Pille. So we move to the next presenter and that is going to be by Dr. Abebe. She's going to join, he's going to join us online. And he'll be speaking about the strategy of Africa CDC and also in relation to regional pool procurement. I don't know if he's ready. Okay, Dr. Abebe, you have the floor. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me? Good morning. Can you hear me?
Hello, can you hear me? We can hear you, Dr. Abebe, sorry.
All right. Good morning. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present about Africa CDC's priorities on local manufacturing. Sorry, I couldn't make it in person due to a family emergency. So I will just go through my presentation. I'll try and summarize what Africa CDC has been doing in this space for the last almost four years. I'm not sure if I will be able to summarize it in ten to fifteen minutes, but I'll try my best. So as we all know, African, the African Union established the partnerships for African vaccine manufacturing, P A V M, in twenty twenty one in the middle of the COVID nineteen pandemic with a very bold goal of manufacturing sixty percent of our vaccine needs in twenty years. So by twenty forty, we're planning, we're aiming to have our manufacturing in place to supply Africa with a sixty percent of vaccine needs on the continent. So how did we develop the strategy? We prioritized diseases for vaccine development and we came up with twenty-two priority diseases. Most of them have been discussed in this forum since yesterday and with technology focused from live virus to subunit vaccines to RNA and DNA vaccines. And we wanted to also approach it end-to-end from supporting R and D all the way through drug substance manufacturing and fill and finish. So in twenty twenty-two, we came up with the continental strategy. I'm sure most of you know very well about continental strategy, the framework for action with eight bold programs. So these are the enablers that that we identified to support vaccine manufacturing and and vaccine manufacturing on the continent. So this include regulatory strengthening, research and development, workforce development, infrastructure, technology transfer, access to finance, market design and demand intelligence. And at the center of it is agenda setting and coordination. Yesterday, there was a very good discussion about how can we coordinate the continental local local manufacturing of vaccines? So that's exactly what Africa CDC is is for. So as Africa CDC as a continental organization, tasked to promote vaccine and other health product manufacturing, we 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 do agenda setting, we do coordination and convening. So we have a convening power, we can convene fifty-five member states of the African Union. And that's where we discuss our coordination of manufacturing, including the things that 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 were mentioned yesterday. So how are we going to coordinate so that we don't fragment manufacturing on the continent? That's one of the things that we we currently are discussing with our member states and manufacturers. So in terms of supporting manufacturing, we wanted to to do it end-to-end from supply side, supporting manufacturers and from the demand side, trying to make sure that the vaccines and medicines diagnostics that are manufactured in Africa have someone to to procure or to buy. So primarily, we're focusing on African Union member states to really prioritize vaccines that will be produced from Africa. And then how we do this is through the enablers. The 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 eight enablers that I just mentioned are the ones that help us address or support localization of manufacturing on the continent. So a lot has has really progressed since twenty twenty one. As you remember, in twenty twenty one, we have, we had only a couple of vaccine manufacturers on the continent. But as of now, we have twenty-five manufacturing initiatives on the continent. This is the supplier's landscape analysis that we have done together with CHAI and PATH. We did, we did it once in twenty twenty-three and we revised it in twenty twenty-four. So as you can see in here, we have different categories of vaccine manufacturing initiatives on the continent. The first category, the first tier, are the ten manufacturers that are that have done the infrastructure. And most of them have done also the the workforce development and they're ready for tech transfer or they have already done technology transfer. We have a second tier, which is manufacturers that have broken ground but not ready for technology transfer. And then we have other groups which are really in the early phase of development. So the question is, do we really need the twenty-five manufacturers on the continent? This is how, this is where Africa CDC comes in and coordinates, asks member states and manufacturers to share information really freely so that all of them understand how the ecosystem is evolving and they make informed decision. So out of the twenty-five manufacturing initiatives, the three manufacturers, as someone presented yesterday, are really progressing well. And they will be producing eight vaccines, eight antigens in the coming three to five years, supplying the continent. I'm not referring to those vaccine manufacturing companies that are targeting their domestic market. We have a couple of other manufacturers that are said to manufacture vaccines at scale but targeting just the domestic market. But these manufacturers, the three manufacturers, they will be producing vaccines for for the continent. And they will be doing fill and finish as well as drug substance manufacturing. So now, the question is, how can we make sure that these three vaccine manufacturers won't really fail? They, how can we make sure that they cross the finish line, which is producing quality products and accessing market? So that's where Africa CDC use eight enablers to support these manufacturers and the rest of the twenty-five manufacturers to support them to make it to the finish line. So we use eight bold programs as enablers, including the regulatory talent, market shopping, access to finance and so on. On the regulatory front, although the regulatory harmonization process is done by M R H at A U D and A P A, our sister organization, we also play a part and coordinate with M R H, A U D and A P A in terms of supporting regulatory strengthening. in terms of supporting regulatory strengthening on the continent. So we have three levels of regulatory support, which is at WHO PQ level, at the regional level, MRH, and then at the national level, national regulatory authorities. So as you know, the WHO prequalification is very important milestone, especially to access the 1.2 billion dollars of AVMA funding. So we have been working with WHO PQ, engaging with them and trying to identify areas of support and fast-tracking WHO prequalification for our manufacturers. So we did two rounds of meetings, one in Addis Ababa and another one in Cape Town. And right now, there is a consensus that manufacturers can submit dosiers in parallel to WHO PQ and national regulatory authorities at the same time. So that's, I would say, a very good progress in terms of WHO prequalification. And then we work with MRH in terms of supporting the different technical committees, especially the ones that are directly supporting vaccine manufacturing. Regarding national regulatory authorities, Africa CDC has been working very closely with at least a few of the six national regulatory authorities that have the maturity level three. As you can see in here, we supported SAPRA, the South African National Regulatory Authorities, with 750,000 dollars worth of equipment to strengthen their national control laboratory to do vaccine quality testing and load release. So we'll be also, together with our partners like SEPI, we'll be also supporting other manufacturers, primarily targeting those manufacturers that have mRNA vaccine manufacturing in their countries. And recently, we have brought together the six NRS with maturity level three. And the idea is for them to agree to rely on each other. So reliance among the ML three national regulatory authorities for us would take us really far in terms of harmonizing regulatory, as well as vaccine manufacturing. So hopefully, the six NRS will sign a memorandum of understanding in the coming couple of months. And we have developed a proposal to support them to do the reliance. In terms of workforce development, as you know, we do have very low talent in terms of supporting manufacturing and other on the continent. We're now sitting at around 3,000 full-time employees on R and D and manufacturing, but we need more than 12,000 to reach our goal of sixty percent manufacturing on the continent. So what we have done so far is we have developed a competency framework for R and D and manufacturing on the continent, and we got it published. We've done a needs assessment because we wanted to understand what exactly the manufacturers need in terms of talent development. And we're in the process of developing a curricula for masters, fellowship programs, internship, and so on. As you know, this is one of the areas that needs really very good coordination. We have so many partners operating on the continent with different priorities and not necessarily aligned with each other. So we're trying and bringing together the actors in talent development so that we have a coordinated approach. So so far, we have been sending our trainees outside of the continent to get hands-on training. We have sent more than hundred experts to Asia and the US. But that has been found to be very expensive, to say the least, and not sustainable. So we have come with the idea of establishing a network of training institutions on the continent. We call it RCCN, Regional Capability and Capacity Network. So we'll be having a network of existing training institutions. It could be universities, research institutions, government institutions, private companies, manufacturers in a consortium to localize manufacturing. So we put out expression of interest, and we received really very high-level interest in terms of joining this RCCN. And right now, we have done the first round of selection, and we're doing the consultation with the different consortia in the different regions of the continent. So the objective is to have at least, to have about five consortia in the five regions of the African continent. In terms of access to finance, I think all of us know about what happened with GAVI. The GAVI board approved the AVMA, the African Vaccine Manufacturing Accelerator. We worked tirelessly with our partners, including African Vaccine Manufacturing Initiative, to kind of convince the GAVI board to approve the 1 billion dollars innovative financing mechanism. And we launched the AVMA together with GAVI and the government of France in Paris in June. And we got 1.2 billion USD pledge for the coming ten years. So the question is, how can we make sure that our manufacturers make use of this innovative financing mechanism? Because it has a requirement for access. One of these requirements is WHO prequalification. So we're working together with our partners to make sure that our manufacturers get the WHO prequalification in time so that they can access the 1.2 billion dollars financing mechanism. And also, we've got a 2 billion USD pledge from AfriXimbank. And as we speak, we're working on operationalizing the financing mechanism, the 2 billion dollar financing mechanism for our manufacturers. This is not only on vaccines. It includes everything else. So Professor Priscilla was mentioning about supply chain. This is another important sticking point for sustainable manufacturing on the continent. Unless our manufacturers have uninterrupted supply of input materials, then we cannot have sustainable manufacturing on the continent. So together with our partner, Coalition for Innovation, we have been working on ensuring supply chain of input materials. Just to give you a context, manufacturing of one vaccine would require up to hundred ingredients.
Sorry, Abebe, sorry, you are muted because I think there is a background noise somewhere.
Someone muted me. I don't know. So can I just start back from supply chain or from the previous slide?
I think you should start from the supply chain slide that you have on.
All right, okay. So we're working with SEPI in terms of ensuring supply chain, uninterrupted supply of input materials for our manufacturers. We have done, we have developed a draft roadmap, identified bottlenecks of supply chain, and identified three strategic solutions. One is localization of input material manufacturing, and the other one is establishing regional access and supply consortium. And the last one is trade-related intervention, which is simplifying and harmonizing trade regulations. Primarily, we'll be working on this topic primarily with the FCFT. My slide is not moving.
Sorry. Move the slide, please, to the next one.
All right, okay. So in terms of market shopping, we're currently working on developing the African pool procurement mechanism. In February this year, the EU Assembly made three important decisions in terms of supporting local manufacturing. One is mandating Africa CDC to develop a pool procurement mechanism. The other one is to expand our mandate to include therapeutics, diagnostics, and other health products in addition to vaccines. And third, someone from Kenya BioVax mentioned about this. We've got His Excellency President William Bruto as a champion of local manufacturing on the continent. So where we are in terms of African pool procurement mechanism, we're finalizing the design of African pool procurement mechanism. This has two important benefits for Africa. One is to ensure access to quality products to our member states. And second is to support our manufacturing. So the APPM design has different components, including the product scope. We have to identify the kind of products that will be included in the different phases of the APPM, the quality assurance mechanism, the client, the member state interface, the financing mechanism. How can we finance APPM so that we'll have a sustainable procurement system on the continent? And finally, the governance structure. So we're collaborating with AfriXimbank and the United Nations Economic Commission for Africa to finalize the APPM design and start operationalizing it. So we have done several engagements with expert panel, a group of experts from organizations that have experience in pool procurement mechanism, the likes of UNICEF, the likes of Global Fund, PIFAR. And we presented the draft APPM to them and got really important input. And then we worked with the UN ECA, and we have agreed to integrate the UN ECA continental pool procurement mechanism to our APPM. So we will be starting our APPM using the products that have been identified by the UN ECA for the startup phase of APPM. And then we're also working closely with regional economic communities because they have some sort of APPM at different levels. Some have done the design, some have tried to operationalize it. So we don't want to duplicate anything. So we have done two rounds of consultation with RICS so that we get aligned with what's happening at a regional level. And finally, we had a very good engagement with PAHO. As you know, PAHO has rich experience of pool procurement, the revolving fund, supporting the member states of the PAHO region for over forty years. So we wanted to learn from them and design our APPM according to aspects of success factors of PAHO. So this is a timeline, and we're aiming, we're on track in terms of our plan to complete the design of APPM. And by next year, early next year, we'll design, we'll finalize the design of APPM, and we'll start operationalizing it. How are we going to do it? We will be doing it in a physical approach. We'll start with a startup phase, which is a few products selected to supply a few member states. And then we have expanding phase and finally maturation phase. At a maturation phase, we'll try and procure products for the fifty-five member states of the African Union. So in addition to the APPM, currently, we're working on demand creation. Someone mentioned about demand creation yesterday. Yes, unless we have predictable demand and of the guarantee, we won't be able to have sustainable manufacturing on the continent. So what we're doing currently is member states' engagement and consultation. We have done a consultation with three countries so far, Ethiopia, Kenya, and Nigeria. And we'll be having two before the end of the year. And then we will continue engaging member states. One of the topics of discussion in here is how can we make sure that member states leverage their procurement decision-making in terms of GAVI, UNICEF procurement to prioritize African-made products? Right now, we're not considering any legally binding preferential procurement for Africa purely because it will take a really long time to convince and have a legally binding agreement by the fifty-five member states of the African Union. And then we have a forum, the African Vaccine and Other Health Products Manufacturing Forum. Last year, we had this forum in Marrakech, Morocco. And we got really, so this is a forum of manufacturers, member states, and partners, national regulatory authorities. The agenda is to discuss the ecosystem and to make informed decision. Since the forum last year, four manufacturers decided to kind of pivot their vaccine manufacturing initiative to something else. So that's a positive progress because they have understood how crowded the ecosystem is and made informed decision. Early next year in February, we'll be having the second manufacturers forum together with GAVI and RBMC in Cairo, Egypt. And again, we'll bring together the fifteen member states of vaccine manufacturers and also other partners. And hopefully, we'll have a really good engagement in terms of discussing the ecosystem on the continent. Thank you very much. Sorry for taking a little bit of more time. Over to you.
Thank you very much, Abebe. That was really good and comprehensive. We move to the next speaker, and we'll be having Matthew Dunham from SEPI take the next session. Is he ready? He's joining us online. Thank you. Matthew.
Good morning. I hope you can hear me okay.
Sorry. I can hear you.
You can hear me. Okay, great. Thank you very much. So firstly, I'd like to thank the organizers for the opportunity to present today. I apologize I can't be with you in person, but I'm hoping here what I can share on the Hundred Day Mission really links and segues into the discussions, the important discussions you're going to be having in Cape Town this week regarding the mRNA program. Next slide, please. So in terms of the Hundred Day Mission, the Hundred Day Mission is something that SEPI launched a couple of years ago and has the definition, as you can see here, that vaccines should be ready for initial authorization and manufacturing at scale within a hundred days of recognition of a pandemic pathogen when appropriate. It's an article that will be published in the New England Journal of Medicine in 2022. But what I'd like to do in this short presentation today is just deep dive into this definition and really think about what does it mean? What does it mean in terms of what should vaccine manufacturers do? How may manufacturers respond? And obviously, the benefits that mRNA offers within this overall process to meet the Hundred Day Mission. And SEPI really believes that mRNA holds the greatest promise for meeting this definition. Next slide, please. So in terms of the Hundred Day Mission, and really, the diagram at the top of the slide on the right here really articulates and shares this in a real summarized way. It's about responding in that hundred days to create vaccines, to deliver vaccines for human use. Now, if you think about traditional vaccine manufacturing pre-COVID, it would take maybe five or more years to develop and supply a vaccine. Through COVID, the first vaccine was available from sequence availability to provision a vaccine within 350 days. So the Hundred Day Mission thinks about how that time period can be compressed and optimized and made even more efficient to deliver vaccine in a hundred days. To do that requires preparedness, considerable preparedness. And that will require quite a paradigm shift to meet. In terms of preparedness, we're thinking about a scientific toolkit, and we'll deep dive into that in a moment. The infrastructure, the policy, and the partnerships Priscilla has already mentioned about the criticality of partnerships and collaboration. And really, that is how things can get done and get done optimally. And we, again, we saw that through the COVID pandemic. In terms of post-hundred days, does that roll out and review vaccines to be continually manufactured, expand and confirm in the clinical evidence? So as you can see, this end-to-end process for a hundred days requires considerable front-loading in the preparedness phase, in that day minus zero period. And how might that be delivered? So the first thing, of course, as you can see, is to leverage existing insights. Think about new pathogens and new development technologies. mRNA is a new technology relatively still compared to previous other technologies. And so obviously, there's an opportunity there to really draw on that and build on it to meet this Hundred Day Mission. There's a need to support innovations in the vaccine development. And this is a key area with mRNA as well. How to leverage new opportunities with the platform technology to develop that and really work forwards for vaccine supply and provision? The use of advanced analytics, and within analytics, that includes artificial intelligence. It's not going anywhere. It's here to stay. How can that also be leveraged and utilized to improve the speed with which vaccines can be manufactured? How can that inform the vaccine development? How can that inform the vaccine development and manufacturing process? Promoting collaboration among stakeholders. And the meeting we're in right now is a key example of how stakeholders and partnerships should be nurtured and really worked on to promote and collaborate to deliver on the Hundred Day Missions. And then continually reviewing evidence to support that swift release. Again, coming back to what happened in the COVID pandemic, not only did manufacturers step up considerably to work and compress the timelines to meet this three hundred and fifty-day delivery and the supply of COVID vaccines through the pandemic, but also the regulatory agencies stepped in, many organizations stepped in. But the regulatory agencies worked tirelessly to improve the rate at which the release and approval of vaccines could be made. Next slide, please. So in terms of the Hundred Day Goal, the Hundred Day Mission, what investment is required? And there's four kind of key pillars that SEPI has identified and we are arguably investing in many areas referenced on this slide. So what's the vision? So leveraging R and D, I mentioned the toolbox. What is in that toolbox? It's candidate vaccines that have been developed, tested and are proven in a ready state to be able to respond to pandemics in future. In other words, in that pre-pandemic day minus zero period, to expand the use of data and analytics, to have critical reagents, have the analyses in a state of readiness to go. And also the leveraging of artificial intelligence, as I mentioned. There's a need to rapidly characterize the outbreak, to trigger the alerts. In other words, what constitutes that day zero? When the trigger is that we start the Hundred Day Mission to deliver vaccines? There is, of course, the W H O's Public Health Emergency of International Concern. And as we've seen recently, the Public Health Emergency, a regional concern that the Africa CDC has specifically issued. How can we rapidly characterize the epidemiology and the disease outbreak that triggers, that really start that important piece of work to leverage the R and D in the manufacturing arena to deliver vaccines as quickly as possible within that Hundred Day Period? Then, of course, there's the scale of manufacturing. How can we manufacture most innovatively with the most speed to support that Hundred Day Mission? And again, mRNA offers that incredible potential, particularly in an epidemic or pandemic response situation because it offers that opportunity for rapid vaccine manufacture. In a gathering evidence period, as you can see, how to work with defined response pathways? How to scale the development and rollout? And this is the post-hundred day period. How can vaccines be expanded to supply and ensure that their continued future use and the clinical elements, the clinical evidence as well, is provided accordingly for support in moving forwards? Next slide, please. So in terms of the actual manufacturing phases, so I'm thinking back to column C on the previous slide. In terms of the manufacturing stages to meet the Hundred Day Mission, SEPI has really been thinking about what are the key kind of stages that would be needed to prepare? So in that day minus zero period, in that preparedness phase, that pre-hundred day mission delivery, there needs to be understanding on the antigen sequences. They need to be identified. They need to be confirmed. And there's also the need to develop the G M P, the manufacturing processes and test releases as well. Obviously, the analytics to release the vaccines is a critical time period in which the vaccines may be ready, but we're waiting for confirmation that they are ready and suitable and fit for purpose. There are handoffs. There are many partners involved in the vaccine manufacturing process, the testing, release. Abibe has just mentioned about the criticality of the supply chain to vaccine manufacturing organizations. That's a key component and we witnessed that through the COVID pandemic. And we've been talking about that in relation to Africa's situation, as Abibe nicely mentioned a moment ago. And there's also the pre-clinical testing. How do we demonstrate these vaccines are immunogenic? They provide that protective efficacy and critically, of course, are safe. They're safe for human use. There's a toxicity element that is not critical to humans. So there's a considerable amount of work there that can be done in that pre-pandemic period. There's the C M C submission, of course. This is getting ready for that authorization, the regulatory authorization period and the clinical trial material generation. In that hundred days, from gene sequence availability, is the production of that clinical trial material, the testing, the characterization and the release, all of which draws on what's happened in the day minus zero phase of the Hundred Day Mission. And then post-a-hundred days, the plus a-hundred day period, you can see the clinical trial elements, the tolerability, demonstrating the correlates of protection, the immune correlates of protection potentially. And then, of course, there's the authorization and data package structure, readiness to submit and license the vaccines moving forwards, a lot of which builds on what happens in the minus zero day period. But of course, has to be articulated, leveraging the human information generated post-a-hundred days. Next slide, please. So in terms of, to draw this to a summary, how should vaccine developers and manufacturers launch that Hundred Day Mission? And the simple answer is to prepare. Prepare well in advance of that Hundred Day Mission, that trigger, whether it's by the Africa CDC, whether it's by the W H O, whoever issues that trigger, we need to be prepared for that trigger to launch that Hundred Day Mission. This period could be many years in advance of that trigger. And so it's about being prepared. As has been articulated already, what's critical, and this is a summary from the New England Journal of Medicine paper I shared earlier, stopping that next pandemic is not something a single country or organization can do alone. We saw this through COVID. One of the lessons learned is partnership, collaboration. SEPI is working with a considerable array of organizations, including the Africa CDC, but many others, the W H O, particularly with respects to the mRNA program, because three of the vaccine manufacturing facilities that are on SEPI's vaccine manufacturing facility network are also W H O, N B P, mRNA facilities, namely Institute Pasteur de Carre, Biopharma in Indonesia, and most recently, of course, Via Cruz, Biemangueinos in Brazil. So success requires advances in many different factors, whether it's organizational factors, governance, et cetera. But what's critical is that this is all coordinated and partnered such that the interconnectivities guide that delivery for the Hundred Day Mission. Collaboration is key. And with that, I'm going to stop. And next slide, I think, just provides a couple of links where more information on SEPI's Hundred Day Mission can be found. With that, I'll conclude and thank you all very much indeed.
Thank you very much, Matthew. We are running behind the schedule and we might have to take the question and answer session in the afternoon, twelve thirty, when we're going to have the press briefing. So the next speaker is from a slightly different perspective. He's from the civil society world. And I'll be handing over the floor to Agri Aluso, Pandemic Action Network.
Okay. So yeah, slightly different perspective. But as the I N B process is trying to define, we're all stakeholders in these processes, right? So I think when that definition lands, we hope we'll have a clear role in this ecosystem. So my name is Agri Aluso. I'm going to be looking at, I'm going to be looking at what the civil society organizations can do and help contribute to creating this enabling ecosystem. But just to run you quickly through what we stand for, Pandemic Action Network really looks forward to a world where each country is prepared to stop infectious diseases and outbreaks from becoming deadly and costly pandemics. Because I think that's why we're all here. We don't want to get into a scenario where we are dealing with pandemics. Our best bet is to get them, you know, not even crossing from animals to human as many cases have been, but you know, being able to stop them before they evolve into those very impactful diseases. So why we exist, well before COVID, we had seen that there are so many outbreaks and pandemics that would be dealt with and then people go back to their silos. And that has created scenarios where we are not, you know, able to respond effectively. And the frequency at which we're having outbreaks and pandemics, I think, is becoming unsustainable. And therefore, our work really is to, you know, to mobilize collective action to build political will and drive commitment. As I think has been mentioned so many times, political will is very, very important for sustainable or for sustained action. So we really look at working with the scientific community to generate evidence or use the evidence that you've generated to really shape the policy, you know, environment and political environment so that we have, you know, an enabling ecosystem that creates and sustain action towards these important solutions. So I think I've talked about that. And we really work through, you know, what we call networked advocacy, looking at everybody within this ecosystem as a participant and as a contributor with very worthy, you know, input to help shape this big ship that should be helping us save ourselves from these, you know, challenges that we keep facing. And recognizing that you exist in a polycrisis areas, there are so many competing priorities. And what you think is important may not be what is important for those who make decisions, the political class and even society. Sometimes connecting the dots between what we are experiencing and what needs to be done, it's not obvious. So really, the work of civil society organization is a lot of times also to help connect the dots and see where the solutions need to come from so that you can get their very important support. So everybody really is an important actor in this process. So just a little introduction also. So in Africa, our work really, Pandemic Action Network does the global work. But in Africa, we're really shifting to more Africa-centric, Africa-based, you know, engagement, trying to connect different actors within the African continent. Because as you've seen in very many presentations, the challenges in Africa have been a little bit more intense. And we have quite also evolving scenarios where we are seeing upside in outbreaks, but not very connected and not very engaged as a society and government. So we really think that harnessing that collective voice and urgency is something that needs to be done by African advocates. And we are connecting civil society organizations to do that. And therefore, PAN launched Resilience Action Network Africa, which I have the privilege of leading. And really, our work has been really to mobilize and sustain collective voices across different sectors. So bringing people, bringing agendas and, you know, really creating that positive collective change. And, you know, just being able to get everybody into that space. So moving to the subject matter for our business here. One thing that I've seen and had in other related sessions, but also here, you know, one assumption that we all, a lot of times operate under is that when science, you know, shows something to be correct, people, it will be supported. Is that true? Not always, I think, from what we've seen. You know, science is great and it really shows us what needs to be done. But we live in that context where there are so many other priorities and so many interests at play that can sometimes, you know, work to undermine that scientific fact. And therefore, even the initiative that you're talking about, the mRNA, from the different presentations that I saw, we could see we are at different levels in different countries. And that really just shows that we have varying context and varying ecosystem that are influencing how the initiative is being taken up in, you know, in different environments. The other assumption that I think we need to test and probably which we can work collaboratively around as civil society organizations and the scientific community is the assumption of economic and political neutrality. A lot of the things we try to do, and I think the I N B process has been a test case for that, you know, where you've seen polarization across the income categories, high income and low income. And really, the contestation is around, you know, what motivates people to engage or to drive certain positions? So there are those who want to maintain status quo because it favors the economic establishment. There are those who want to change the status quo because it does not lend itself to equity. And that's the L M I C region. And I think the high-income countries also see that. But there's quite a bit of contestation that you'd see is driven by different interest groups and different political positioning. And that's something that we, as civil society organizations across the board. And the good thing of civil society organization, whether you're in high-income country or low-income country, we tend to speak the same language. And we work across the board to ensure that the important principles like equity are centered. And that's something that we can learn in this process. So we think comprehensive approach is essential. And in the design of a big, great initiative like this one, we really need to look at the whole, you know, ecosystem of stakeholders and look at the, you know, the initiatives against, you know, what needs to change and what needs to be put in place so that it can be picked up and driven to success. And therefore, integrating scientific advancements with supportive policies, community engagement, you know, that will ensure adequate resource allocation, I think, is very, very important. We could see, you know, from the presentation, I particularly liked the Brazil, where you've seen a lot of allocation from government and there are so many other countries here, you know, including France, who have been very consistent in supporting these initiatives. And I'm not going to mention all, but just saying that juxtaposed against certain instances, we could see that we need to, you know, build that ecosystem where we have that level of support, where governments are actually owning and running those initiatives. Because that's what will create sustainability. So really, in this ecosystem, we see health innovation really can provide breakthroughs, but requires supportive ecosystem. We talked about that. We really need to bring the community and C S Os as important collaborators to bridge science and public needs and mobilizing communities and amplifying their voices. They're also very important in addressing systemic barriers because we know we exist in a context where this status quo and there are certain established trends that sometimes are not very supportive, that we can break or that need to be transformed so that we can all have our eyes on the important thing. But I think more importantly is fostering collaborative ecosystem because the civil society organizations are very diverse. And if we mobilize, that's one thing that we exist to do, to mobilize cross-section or different sections or different thematically affiliated C S Os to really bring the support that is required. I think COVID was a very important, unfortunately, but important lesson that really demonstrated the whole of society imperative, whole of government, whole of society. And if we continue to do things important as what we are talking about here in siloed, very technically vertical spaces, then we rob the important ventures like this one, the political support opportunity that is important for them. So just quickly emphasizing on that, I think one lesson that we've learned from COVID and others is that if there's no political cost to inaction, there may be little or no action and there'll be no sustainability. I think that's what it's very, very key and one lesson that I think we've learned even in these particular initiatives. And that's where we think C S O support is crucial in building this political support towards driving, you know, accountability and fostering trust that we think will help build a sustainable engagement. And just in terms of what really it would take to build this meaningful C S O engagement, first of all, I think you need, the scientific community needs to see us as allies and not competitors nor detractors. I think a lot of times, we can, we are seen as people who are, you know, detracting or, you know, people who are not being supportive of a lot of processes, but we do. And don't be impatient with us. You know, I think as we have seen along many contexts, when we work collaboratively, I think we get to achieve a lot. And we will support transparency and accountability. And I think that's very, very important in ensuring accountability. And I was talking to my compatriots from Kenya that I think there's a lot that we can achieve if we work and just get the public to know how important these processes. It would make the government take it more seriously. Because if the public is not lending its voice and they're not seeing, you know, that as something that the citizens take seriously, they also, you know, take their time. In Kenya, if you, if you have bad roads, people would plant bananas to demonstrate their, you know, resentment of lack of action. But I've worked in scenarios where there was a woman who went to our facility to give birth. And she was ferried between one hospital and the other because there was no blood here, there was no doctor here. Seven hours, she passed away. That same week, there was a bus that hit a motorcyclist, that bus was burnt on the spot. The same day, the woman died in hospital, there was no action at all. Because people have accepted certain failures in certain sectors and that, you know, sustains itself in terms of lack of political action. So really, us, what we do is to, you know, create that opportunity for really to position and create an alternative narrative that show everything, every life is important. And there was a possibility of creating, you know, doing something different to help save scenarios like the one that I've just talked about. I think one thing that we are, the scientific community is struggling with that we can also help is the anti-science sentiments that are really taking root. You know, there's been, every time there's I N B session going on, there are very many anti-treaty, anti-science, anti-vaccine. there are very many anti-treaty, anti-science, anti-vaccine sentiments that, you know, are flying around. And I think working collaboratively with civil society organizations can really help, you know, deal with that and help create that trust and supportive environment. And the social and political capital, like I note, I emphasize. And I think we've talked about this, the misinformation, disinformation, and, you know, working with trusted messengers. We work very closely with communities. And a lot of our members are people who are relied upon for information. So even when you're doing clinical trials or, you know, vaccine, whatever thing that needs to be done, and particularly in financing conversations, which is a bit of a challenge in a lot of our African countries. Most of our resources are not coming from our government, they're coming from elsewhere. And that's something that civil society organizations can help create that pressure so that government prioritize, you know, what the citizen think is important. And that one of them is really supporting uptake of innovations like the one we're talking about here. So with those many remarks, I want to thank you for giving us a chance to lend our voice in this very scientific space. But I hope at the end of the day, we will see the importance of all stakeholders in this process and that we will continue working together, going to the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Agri. So we're going to have the very last presentation or session. Speaker, come on stage. Of course, not the least speaker. The EU's support to ensuring equitable access to health technologies is the topic. And that's going to be taken by Nicole Jellies, Head of the Governance and Human Development Section of the EU delegation to South Africa. Nicole.
Thank you so much. I'll try not to speak for too long, because whilst I know that the Q and A has been postponed, I definitely don't want to deprive such a large room of scientists from their coffee break. So I'll try and go as quick as possible. But no, I just wanted to, it's great. Thank you so much, first of all, for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. We really wanted to come and just basically outline what the EU is doing to support vaccine manufacturing and also other medicines manufacturing in Africa. And of course, the speakers before me have outlined the problem. And it's also great to hear the progress that's being made in all different respects, whether ranging from CSO to government level and of course, the international level. And that's where we also try to come in at all three levels. So as mentioned, the problem essentially is, and as we saw it during the COVID nineteen pandemic, that Africa currently imports over ninety-nine percent of its vaccines and ninety-four percent of the medicines it uses. And this is what led to, as Dr. Abebe mentioned, the call from African leaders to produce sixty percent of vaccines in Africa by twenty forty. And on our side in the European Union, this led to what we call a Team Europe initiative called, what we call it, the short term is MAFplus, but it's manufacturing access to vaccines, medicines and health technologies in Africa. And we launched this in twenty twenty-one, and essentially it is our response to this problem and how to prevent and be more prepared in the future. So just to maybe outline briefly what MAFplus is. So it's a comprehensive support package in which we tackle the barriers to manufacturing and access to health products and technologies across Africa. And so the idea is not just about the manufacturing phase, but it's really what we call a three hundred and sixty degree approach. And that's looking at the whole ecosystem around the process of manufacturing medicines. So actually, I was very happy as well in Dr. Bebe's presentation that he used the three words that I also have written down, supply, demand and enabling environment. And this is really the all encompassing approach that we have because we think that it's a hundred percent necessary. You can't just focus on one aspect, let's say, of the supply chain, but all of it together. So we actually deliver activities in six countries currently across Africa. So Rwanda, Ghana, Senegal, Egypt, Nigeria, and of course, South Africa. We work in partnership with African Union agencies, so the Africa CDC and Alder Neppad. We work with Africa Union Member States, national regulatory authorities, the regional economic communities, African universities, training programs and pharmaceutical manufacturing plants, which I believe you will even visit later today. And so for us, South Africa is a regional and continental hub for mRNA vaccine technology transfer. And it's well positioned to be the leader in local production. And that's thanks to the active pharmaceutical sector and that already has a relatively strong regulatory authority. And therefore, we are proud to say that since day one, the EU has been a strategic partner for South Africa in this journey. And we have already committed around four hundred million euros. And off the top of my head, but I'm not known for my math skills. And so this is risky in a room full of scientists, I think eight billion rand, looking someone to confirm, to support South Africa in this journey. And the key thing is that's twenty percent of our funding overall for the MAFplus initiative. So that really does show the, not only the importance that we pertain to the whole program, but to South Africa and also the opportunities that there are here within this sector. And so just to give you an indication, so the MAFplus actions in South Africa, we fund alongside the EIB, the European Investment Bank, our German partners, for example, KFW and GIZ and France. And we focus mostly on regulatory strengthening, research innovation support, technical assistance for capacity building of regulatory authority, support to market shaping, pandemic preparedness and above all, skills development for people in the R and D and private sector. And this is of course, not only in South Africa, but regionally. Very concretely, to give you an indication, so far, we've contributed to the funding of the mRNA hub with a total of forty, over forty million euros, forty million euros. And I'm not going to try and convert this into rounds for each one, but from Team Europe in total. And we've also helped strengthen biovax vaccine production capabilities with a fifteen million euro grant. And we're also funding the establishment of a center of excellence for health product safety monitoring across Southern Africa, working with the Institute of Tropical Medicine in Antwerp alongside the University of Western Cape. And we're also supporting the enabling environment for pharmaceutical production, focusing on research and development skills and higher education. And that's with the GIZ. We're working on strengthening biomanufacturing capabilities in Southern Africa, focusing on skilled labor shortages and scaling up biomanufacturing processes for vaccines and pharmaceuticals. And that's alongside the Council for Scientific and Industrial Research in Pretoria. And in the future, you never know what the future may hold, but we do have concrete plans alongside our Team Europe partners to keep the investments coming in this sector. And we're of course delighted to hear the synergies as well with the G twenty presidency priorities. So we're sure that we can help further encourage other partners along the way. And as I said, I'll stop there because I really don't want to deprive anyone of coffee. But once again, I'd just like to thank you all for having us, for the support, for the continued work. And we look forward to seeing where this goes in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Nicole. Thank you for your support to the program. So just to summarize this session, we've had the global perspective provided by Precios in terms of the overarching policy, the development of a policy in terms of an agreement on pandemic preparedness and response. What they have done so far, what is remaining to be done, including the issues around a few language that seems to be holding everything back. And we hope that we can actually get across the finish line before May twenty twenty-five. We had the regional perspective provided by Abebe. He highlighted the work that Africa CDC is doing in terms of convening, coordination, including the very essential aspect of pool procurement. From the national level, also kind of global. Pili spoke about the priorities of South Africa's G twenty presidency. And then interestingly, there are areas that are quite relevant to this project, to this program. Science and innovation is one of the priority areas. Pandemic preparedness and response is very relevant. And then we look forward to a successful G twenty presidency because South Africa is a leading country in Africa. And they actually have the development of Africa as one of their goals for their G twenty presidency. Then we have supportive bodies like the Civil Society Organization Perspective provided by Agri. He highlighted the essence of engagement, the need for transparency. Sometimes civil society could be critical, but they are important stakeholders in the ecosystem. We also had Matthew from SEPI providing the product development perspective, in particular, in relation to the one hundred days mission. And then finally, we have the support, I mean, we have the comment from Nicole representing the EU in terms of partnership, financing, financing of the various initiatives, and that is really crucial. So I think it's been a really, really loaded session, and I think we've had a lot to reflect upon. So as I mentioned earlier, we do not have time to take questions now. But in the afternoon, during the press briefing, you will have the opportunity to put your questions through. For the online presenters, Matthew and Abebe, I hope you'll be able to join us at that time so that you could answer any question that relates to you. If there is any change in time, we'll notify you so that you can try to attend if you can.